Monday, October 16th at 7:30. And I call the City Council of the City of Brainerd to order. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Item three is discussion items. That's what it says. Pleasure, ladies. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know that was supposed to be pulled.
All right. Item five is the approval of the agenda. We have one addition. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. I'd like to add, we have another item at Personal and Finance to accept the resignation of Recreation Coordinator Katie Kaufman, and I would move to adopt the agenda with that addition.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We have an agenda. Item six is the consent calendar. Matters listed are considered, retained by the council, and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar? Motion by Stunek, is there a second? Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Item seven A is presentations. Presentation of the sanitary and storm sewer rate study. Who's making the presentation this evening?
Mr. President, I can introduce the gentleman that'll do the presentation for us.
Mr. City Engineer, Public Works Director Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan Cosbaum with Utility Financial Solutions is online to present the results of the sanitary and storm sewer rate study that has been conducted this year. After the presentation, staff would request some input from the council on how they'd like to propose or what they would like to propose for rates, and we would prepare resolutions for the council at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
All right. Well, thank you, Jesse, for the introduction. Thank you for having me here this evening to walk through the cost of service study that we did for the two utilities, sanitary and stormwater. I want to just make sure, so can everyone see my screen, or do you have handouts?
We see your screen perfect.
Wonderful. So, the first utility we'll talk about is the sanitary collection system, but for both systems, we're going to talk about a five-year financial projection and how your financials are looking going out those five years, comparing them to where we determine some financial targets that I'll talk about. Then we look at cost of service. Where that, the customer charges, the charges we implement in our bill, where are those in comparison to how we incur our costs? So, the cost of service there. And so, the guidance I'll look for from council will be kind of noted here at the end, but looking at overall what adjustments you would like to see going forward. As with, you know, any projection, we need to look at what assumptions we're going to put into that projection. So, the first one we have is general inflation, a little bit higher here in '24, actually '23. We're basing this off '22 financials in '20, '21, and '22. But for '23, we have a 5%, then a 4%, followed by 3% going there on out. For sales growth in the sanitary, we're looking at no growth in the units of sale. You may have new homes and so on, but as far as the units, they're at zero. Investment income, this is any cash that is invested by the utility. That cash, we're assuming, would have a 3% interest towards our utility. Capital improvement program, so this is something that Connie and Jesse worked on with me, and we put together this five-year program for capital, a little bit heavier in '24, and then right around $400,000 each year thereafter. And with that capital program, I put a column here next to that that talks about your percent of plant depreciated. So, it's looking at the investment of assets that you have in the system and how much we have depreciated or used up the life of those assets. So, you see we're at about 58%, a little bit on the older side compared to average out there. Average would be about 50%. So, you see with this capital program that our assets are becoming less aged, all right, through the next five years. So, they're going from 58% to about 52%. For the financials in the sanitary, you're projected to have about $866,000 in revenue in '24 and $784,000 in expenses. So, I went, I reviewed, worked with Connie and Jesse as well in looking at your projected changes and forecasts for '24. And so, we have an operating income of about $82,000 projected. Then we have some other items that we add in there, our interest income, interest expense. We do have debt with this utility. So, our net income is about $325,000. Cash flow, we are, with this capital program, we are projected to, our cash will drop about So, we end up moving from about $1 million in the sanitary department to about $952,000. What this looks like in a five-year projection, the top table is showing us the five years, the far left column, '24 through '28, with no rate adjustments. We show our debt coverage ratio on our debt will be okay. We're at about 2.8 each year. Our minimum is 1.4, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. Going further, all the way to the right, our projected cash balances are starting out about $950,000. We look at our, my column that's identified recommended minimum is 1.2. So, we're below the minimum of 1 point, I'll say each of those, you know, averages about 1.3 million is what we want in cash for this utility. So, we're below that in year one and two. But with the capital program, and we are, we do have an operating income level that is generating some more cash that's helping build that up. But you see, in the end year, 2028, we have a projected loss for operating income of $4,000. So, we want to do something with our rates to address getting, you know, our operating income is dropping each year, so we want to address that. Earlier, we addressed that, the easier that is. The bottom table then shows us with a 2.5% increase each year for the sanitation department, it will move our targets back, or our position back to meet our targets. And I put in a column here, the third column from the left, just to show you what a 2.5% increase is each year on an average residential 5/8 meter. So, it's about 30 cents a month for that increase. But our debt coverage is still, it's maintained about 3, 3.0. Our cash moves up as, at a position we're above our minimum reserve level. And our operating income, what I did there, so I wanted it to be held right around $100,000. We are increasing, moving towards our optimal position, but I just thought with our cash position, we want to kind of hold and just maintain that operating income position. So, the question would be, what are the targets that we look at? The first one is the minimum debt coverage. So, when you have debt, you usually have a covenant that requires you to meet 1.1 to 1.2 debt coverage ratio. In your case, you do, this is a general obligation bond, so it doesn't pertain to this utility. It's a bond issued by the city. So, right now, you're projected above, if there were a ratio requirement, you're above it, but you're in good shape. And this is really the, how much cash that's generated by the utility, the ratio of that cash to what your debt service payment is. So, it tells us the cash generated is able to pay your debt 2.85 times in 2024. The next target on the right here is minimum cash. So, this is a minimum level of cash we want the department to have in order to operate day-to-day. We have four criteria that we look at. The first is your operation and maintenance. We do subtract out your depreciation expense. So, this is, your annual O&amp;M is about $280,000. We want to have about 12.3% of that in our cash at all times. That accounts for about a 45-day working capital lag of cash, which amounts to about $35,000. That allows the department to pay their bills, you know, between the time you incur an expense and you recover that revenue for that expense. That 45-days lag is what we're using there. So, this cash helps cover that timeframe. The, I'm going to skip the historical rate base, we'll come back to that. The debt service, $310,000 a year. We want to have that in our cash so that when that debt payment comes due, we have that cash available. So, 100% of that. And then our five-year capital program, net of bond proceeds. So, for the sanitary system, we're looking, we sum up that five-year capital program, which is 2.6 million. We don't project borrowing for this system. So, we take that 2.6 million and multiply it by 0.2 or 20%. And that amounts to about 1/5 of that five-year capital program. So, if we have that $531,000 in cash, that allows us to pay those capital bills as they are coming due through the year, probably more heavily in the summertime. But that allows the utility to be able to pay those capital projects as they come due. I'm jumping back to historical rate base. So, right now, this sanitary system has about $20 million in assets that are buried throughout the city. We want to look at those assets and identify, you know, I talked about how old they are or how depreciated they are, being 58%. So, that tells me they're a little bit on the older side. So, we assign a risk of the potential of damage in a catastrophic event for, say, sewers, the sewer lines. It could be frost or whatever kind of catastrophic event that may occur. We put a risk of 2%. The older the assets are, the more likely or more apt they are to damage in those events. So, we want to have about $400,000, and I'll call this your, an emergency fund. This is not necessarily an amount that would fully support or take care of a catastrophic event, but this $300,000 will allow the utility to get repairs underway immediately while finance and engineering are looking at ways to, what needs to be fixed and how much it's going to cost. And when we sum those four together, that comes to the 1.3 million as a recommended minimum level. So, we're just below that at about $950,000. The final target, optimal operating income, this target is our kind of upper boundary, upper boundary of setting rates. And what we look to recover, so this is the difference between the revenue you've collected in the utility over the year, less the expenses. You have that operating income position, and what we're trying to identify, what should that be? And we include any debt service interest expense. We want to cover that with that operating income, and we want to cover the inflationary increase on the assets that we have out there in our utility. So, remember, we have $20 million in assets that, over the years, we've been putting in the ground. As you know, an asset that you put in place 20 years ago, you've collected the depreciation of that asset over the last 20 years through your rates. But what we have to consider as well is that asset no longer costs the same as it did 20 years ago. So, if it was $1 million 20 years ago, it's a million-plus inflation today to replace that. So, that inflationary adjustment is what we're looking to recapture in that operating income position. So, that amounts to $515,000 a year. So, your assets are becoming more costly to replace by about $500,000 a year. So, when we look at your optimal operating income of $570,000, we're projected to be at $81,000 or $82,000. So, we're below it. But again, this is an upper boundary that we, we look at the other two targets as well. Obviously, we don't want to run out of cash, and we have to, if we have a requirement in our debt coverage, we have to meet that requirement. So, I went through the financial piece of this sanitary system. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Cosbaum?
President Bevins.
Yep. Mr. Chesak?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions about the $20 million of capital in sanitary line. Is that the correct way of saying that?
Yes.
Okay. So, you said there was an average, I can't remember exactly how you put that, what did you call it, a risk, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. So, when you look at that total throughout the city of $20 million worth of sanitary sewer line, where do you start to identify what is needed most? The oldest, I would assume, depending on the type of pipe that's used. Is that how you figure that as far as the risk? Based on your 2%, that's an average, where would be the, what would be the worst risk you've seen in our sanitary sewer, the highest, like percentage-wise?
That's an excellent question. On what I am doing, I'm purely just looking at your financial statements. I'm looking at the numbers. I can't tell you what you need to do.
Okay. Well, based on your financial analysis, then, would you say it's probably the best if you're going to do a resurfacing of a street if we have a really old sanitary sewer line under that street? That it's probably best to look at that and get a, you know, spend more today to get that done correctly and fix it now instead of resurfacing a street? And then, in a couple of years, if something fails on a really old, 100-year-old sanitary sewer line to get that fixed sooner than later? And do it when the time is during construction of, like, say, a street mill and overlay?
I would lean on Jesse for that, but I know there are tools out there that they run cameras down the lines. If you have excessive infiltration of water into the sewer lines, causing your water treatment units to be higher, you might have low areas that water infiltrates the system a lot. But I'm kind of looking more on the financial side and not the actual.
Right. I'm thinking financially as well, I guess maybe on a different term, but when we, when we talk about infrastructure under the ground, it's good to analyze it, obviously, but we also want to make sure that when we're doing a project, I think it would be safe to say you want to, perhaps it might cost more today to do, say, a full debt reclamation as far as instead of a mill and overlay, to get done what we can do now instead of coming back in a couple of years and having to disrupt what we've paid for, say, today as opposed to coming. I think that would be sound financial advice to do it that way, in your opinion, perhaps? Would that be?
I would agree.
Okay.
And I think that's a main topic in the next utility, the stormwater, but you're kind of at, you're in a position that you, it's hard to go tear up a street for just, I don't want to say just, but for this, you know, replacement of a sewer line or a sanitary line. And I think, you know, when you can share that cost of the street being torn up and replaced with water or with, you know, other utilities, I think that, that's the best time to do it.
Yeah. You don't want to do it just for one particular piece of infrastructure when there's two or three others down there as well. I understand. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You don't want to do, okay. Thank you. Thank you, President Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Somebody over here, Mr. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a handful, I'll try to limit them. So, on the minimum debt coverage target number one, you said that we actually have taken out general obligation debt, not utility revenue debt, so the coverage ratio doesn't really apply to general obligation debt. If we took out utility revenue debt instead of general obligation debt, would we get better rates or interest rates from the banks? Or is there benefit to taking out utility revenue bonds?
That's a great question. Usually, cities with utilities will have the utility do a revenue bond because the city is limited on how much they can borrow through the general obligation. That's not my background, but I know there's a limit on how much general obligation bonds can, you know, a city can draw. And some of these utilities can, can be, you know, quite expensive. And it's, I don't know that you get a, you probably get a better rate in your general obligation, but I'm not really sure on that.
Well, Connie, can we look into that next time we're taking out debt?
We also have our bond council here right now.
Yes. And actually, we are taking out utility revenue bonds for the Brainerd public utility portion of the project, and that is GO-backed. So, I think that Chris Hogan from Baker-Tilly can discuss that more when we get to our bond issue, or if you wanted to get up and discuss it now, whatever.
Well, this isn't what she's here for, though, right? I'm going to put her on the spot.
No, I'm happy to.
Come on up and answer that question, please. Give your name, and so people who are at home.
Sure. It's Chris Hogan from Baker-Tilly, the city's municipal advisor. The question, as far as issuing debt for utilities, you have the, in Minnesota, we have the opportunity to issue debt under general obligation, which is not typical of most states. So, that's a really good benefit of Minnesota. So, you can issue debt, general obligation-backed or revenue. Generally, your general obligation debt's going to give you the lowest cost. That's going to give you the lowest interest rate. There is less restrictions as well. When you do a revenue debt, you have, and you talked about this, you have rate requirements, you have certain coverage requirements, you have additional bonds, test is what they call, but there's certain tests that you have to meet. So, it's a little stricter to do revenue debt versus general obligation.
One more on that, Kelly.
Yes, please. This is the time.
Is there any benefit to the city to take out utility revenue debt instead of general obligation debt? Because I know there's general obligation limits, but we're nowhere near that and not planning to be anytime soon.
Right. So, general obligation limit is 3% of the taxable market value. And I, and that's an official statement with the bond issue you just did, and I don't have that in front of me, but I don't think you're anywhere close to that.
Right.
But that's a limitation that if you were bumping up against that, you would want to be careful and have the opportunity to issue debt revenue as strict revenue. But you're, I'm pretty sure you're not close to.
So, that's really the only benefit is to, is if we're, have too much, not too much, but have a, are nearing the max of general obligation?
That's where you wouldn't want to, if you're bumping up against the max, you want to save that.
Uh-huh. But there's really no benefit to the city to go with the utility revenue debt over general obligation debt?
Policy-wise, there may be some policies in place, but again, general obligation debt's going to give you the lowest rate of borrowing.
Okay.
And, and less strict covenants or requirements to issue the debt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah. And then, that's all I'll ask on the debt coverage. The cash reserve target, I kind of have the same question that Councilman Chesak asked about the historical rate base, that $20 million. And you used 2%, but I would like to see the numbers, what have we spent the last five, 10 years on emergency projects that we didn't plan for? And use that percentage in this calculation. But then I also go to the five-year capital improvements, net of bond proceeds. You assumed that we aren't going to take out debt, and it'd be nice if we just had all that money and didn't take out debt. But as you see in target number three, we do indeed have debt because we do take out debt. I don't know what percentage of the, of the projects we've done over the last 10 years have been debt financed, but it looks like we, we do that sometimes.
We did issue debt for the airport utility extension project. That is the debt that we have out there.
That is the only wastewater collection debt?
And we have some equipment, also some debt related to some equipment, the Vacta truck that is also in the sanitary sewer.
Okay. So, generally, we don't issue debt just on our projects.
Historically, we have. However, we've been able to fund it now with our rates. So, we are not planning on issuing debt in order to fund our capital plan.
So, we're hoping to not issue debt over the next five years?
Correct.
Okay. Then I agree with that number. But yeah, I just, on the historical rate base, like, let's look historically, what are we spending? And use that as a percentage. And then, on the optimal operating income target, that number looks about right to me because I did the division, and we've got about 80 miles of pipes that last about 40 years. We should do a couple miles a year, it's about a half a million bucks. So, that looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of our consult? Dan, anything else you've got?
I have more slides.
Yep. We love slides.
You didn't, you didn't tell he wasn't finished?
Ready to go to the next one? So, that's the financial piece. The next component we want to look at is cost of service for our sanitary system. And so, we want to know our rates are equitable between the different customer types we have, try to limit the subsidization between those customers. And we have a monthly customer charge. You know, where, where is cost of service to where our rates are today? So, here's a summary by meter size here listed on the left. The cost of service summary is next to that. So, the readiness to serve or that monthly meter charge for the 5/8 meter shows it should be about $15.28. You see, that's the majority of your meters out there. We have 4,400 meters out there on that size. We, we show then the overall readiness to serve is 821. Now, this is just the fixed cost recovery. Would be about $820,000 for this meter class, and we're projected to collect only about 313. So, it shows, we want to have an increase more on that monthly meter charge in this customer class. And you can see, in general, the smaller meter here needs more of an increase than the one-inch is about. the one-inch is about a 62% need of an increase to our current rate position. And when we get into these bigger meters, we see we're actually a little bit above cost of service. And what I, so about seven years ago, I think it was 2016 or 2017, I, at that point, you did, you were collecting revenue all on commodity. And so over the past five, six years, we've been adjusting that monthly meter charge each year. And so we've really made a lot of good progress on that. I'll say what happened, though, is we are adjusting that smaller residential-sized meter, we're adjusting that a little slower than we did the others. So I think that's why we are, you know, showing that that need is more in those smaller meter sizes. At the bottom, this is your commodity charge. And so for our commodity, it shows actually a reduction. But what's happening is in not collecting revenue in the fixed, we're over-collecting in the commodity. So what we're, cost of service is showing is we need to shift some of that commodity cost up into the fixed cost recovery of that monthly meter charge. But overall, for the utility, to get to cost of service would be a 46% increase. That's not what I, you know, I talked about looking out over the five years and looking at our projections that a 2.5% each year over the next five will be fine. So the slide here is showing us then the cost of service charge to where we are today. So that 15.28 monthly meter charge, we're at 6.05 today. So keep in mind, you know, five years ago, this was zero. And then the one-inch goes up from there till we get to the six-inch meter at $140. And so what I'd like, as far as some input, is how, I'll say, aggressive do we want to move towards cost of service? These larger meters, we probably just hold them where they're at. These smaller meters, are you comfortable with 50 cents or a dollar each year or $2? I would, it appears that we've been doing about a dollar. But if you want to get to the cost of service in three years, I can, you know, do the math and get it where we would move that up over three years and then adjust the commodity down to where we are at an average 2.5% increase.
We've got a question here.
I thought he was asking for input. If he's waiting for input.
Are you looking for input right now on that?
You could. So what I'll do with the input is take that input and develop the rate design. I did do a rate design here where I'm increasing this $6 by about 50 cents each year. So you can kind of get a, see what I'm doing. I'm adjusting those up. You can see the larger meters stay static. And then your commodity charge, the volume charge, you can see goes from 140, it drops to about 137, and then 134. So each year, that commodity is dropping. So what happens is we're pushing that cost recovery into that fixed monthly charge, which does help provide a more stable revenue to the utility. And it is more fair to customers that may go away for the winter. They're not, you know, you're still maintaining those lines, and they can come home at any point in time in the winter and, say, Christmas, and they can use the system. If we're not charging them an appropriate monthly fee, it gets, that cost recovery is then pushed into our commodity. And so that cost is recovered from the customers that are there in the winter, and they end up supporting that cost. So this is an example.
Mr. Johnson has the floor. Hang on one second, Jeff. Thank you, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. President. It sounds like he's not looking for direct input at this moment.
You have a comment on what he's talking, I think it's pertinent.
Well, yeah, when we adopted the monthly service fees, you've said five years, whatever, I was opposed to it then, I don't like that. I think people who flush their toilet more should pay more. I think it's that simple. So I'm not a big fan of decreasing the commodity charges at all, because the people who use the system should be paying for the system, especially if they use it more than their neighbor.
I think that's a pertinent comment. Thank you. Mr. Chesak?
Yes. As, please identify the commodity or commodities in English. I don't speak, well, there you go.
Sorry.
What are, yes?
It's the number of units of gallons that you are utilizing. It's meter, it's your water meter that's giving the reading. And it's, the assumption is it goes out as well.
Okay, so it's sanitary going out, storm, I mean, water coming in? Is that your, is both, both directions here we're talking?
The measure is coming in. We don't measure it going out.
Okay, thank you.
It's assumed the same.
I need a clarification, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Please continue.
All right. And then here's an example with that rate design I put there and how it would impact a customer with a 3/4-inch meter, your current rate against the proposed. And then, so I ran the calculations to show what that dollar impact is for customers with that meter size at various units of commodity, from two to six units. And you can see it's an impact of between 45, well, 33 cents to 45 cents a month. And the one-inch meter, you know, a little bit bigger meter, their average commodity is a little bit higher, and their dollar impact ranges from about 46 cents to 82 cents. So that was the example I'm showing here, just, and these are the majority of your meters. That is the summary then for the sanitary system. Getting into the stormwater, again, assumptions, this one here, same assumptions for inflation, growth, and investment income. And the capital program, we have, I've listed the total capital program, and then next to that, there's, so you see in '24, we have a capital program of 1.7 million, but it's projected, there's a potential grant out there of about 905,000 to reduce that capital down to about 800,000. That would be required of the utility. And that then is followed by, as you see, 500,000 in '25, only about 100,000 in '26, and then about 400 average in '27 and '28. And this utility, you can see, looks to be a little bit on the newer side. When I say newer, it's less than 50% depreciated. So today, with that capital program that we're looking at of 1.7 million, that gets us to where the utility's about 45% depreciated.
President Beavens?
Yes, sir.
What, who is paying for a storm sewer when we talk about fees?
Your customers. They pay on a residential equivalent unit.
Okay, so, right, so on your public utility statement, you'll see a storm sewer fee? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, is that correct? Is that anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
All right. So then with the 2024 projection, again, I worked with Connie and Jesse, and so we're projecting revenue of about 480,000, expenses about 468,000, so an operating income of about $12,000. And my understanding is if, for that capital program of 1.7, if you don't get the grant for 905,000, that the project doesn't happen then, all right? So it's, those two go together. But net cash, we do lose about $400,000 in '24, and we end up in a negative, we did end last year negative $400,000, so this would increase that to about negative 900,000, looking at this as a utility on its own. So with that.
Hang on one sec, Dan. We've got a question.
On that, that line item you have for the grant proceeds, 905,000 and the estimated capital expense of 1.7 million, are we talking about the gully?
The gully is a portion of the 1.7. There's the other portion for the South Brainerd project as well as one of the downfall replacements.
Beach Street and the gully?
Not Beach, South Brainerd.
Okay. Okay, because that was 1.3 when we just went through it in our meeting, so I was wondering where the other 400 were coming from. Thank you.
We got another question, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have later on the agenda tonight, a position description up for approval for somebody to manage our MS4 stormwater, which I think would be funded out of this fund. Do these 2024 financial projections have that half FTE employee in it?
Connie Hillman's nodding her head yes.
Yes, it does. We have it currently in the professional services line item instead of in salaries and personnel, because that's where we were directed to put it for 2023 for the rate study.
Okay, but this 52,000 is essentially what we expect our half of the employee.
I mean, that was very, very rough estimate, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
All right. So much like the previous utility on top here, I'm showing our five-year financial projection with no rate adjustments. I'm also showing the same thing on the bottom, but I'm showing you with and without borrowing for this utility. I'm looking at potentially having you borrow about $1 million. I wanted to show you at the, on the top, just, you know, the, without adjusting rates in our, we don't have debt currently in this utility, so that's not a measure. But our projected cash is negative throughout all five years, and our operating, we're operating really at a loss four years out of the five. So we do need to address that with some rate adjustments, but I would like to see us also implement some borrowing for the capital programs that we have. So on the bottom table, I have the 1 million in borrowing, and you can kind of see our cash kind of goes in and out of a positive and negative position each year. Our operating income doesn't change with borrowing, but it does, will help us in our rate adjustment, which I have on the next slide. I have the first two years of rate adjustments at 15% and the outer three years at 5. And next to that, I've kind of shown again, like in the sanitary, what dollars is that? So in sanit, I'm sorry, in the storm sewer, we pay based on a residential equivalent unit. And so it's 60 cents, say, for a typical residential customer. Under that 15% increase, year two, that would be about 70 cent increase. And then thereafter, the increases would be about 30 cents a month. But that gets our debt coverage ratio in very good position to support that borrowing that we have. It turns our operating income to a position that it's growing each year, it's moving towards our optimal operating income position, and you see our cash is growing. And this utility is, you know, maybe a little more unique than the sanitation, sanitary system, because this one, your projects are really, they're planned, but they're more directed at when a street is going to be, you know, torn up, that's your opportunity. And so that can be hard to predict your capital programs. But what I'm going to talk about here, too, in an upcoming slide, is maybe that we look at something a little bit more than this recommended minimum reserve that I'm listing. This is for your operations, but I think for your capital program, it would be, maybe a policy could be put in place to help with larger unplanned capital projects that come about. So the input that I would be looking for, if we would be comfortable bonding to build our cash up in '24, and the rate track, two years at 15% and the following three at 5%.
Kelly.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I think the rate increases are absolutely necessary, being that we're projected to be a million in the hole after next year. But I don't think, I don't see the reason why we would bond, why we would borrow money and pay interest just so our reserve balance looks like it's above zero, because I just don't see the benefit of that. I don't think we should be borrowing money just for the sake of borrowing money.
President Beavens? Mr. Chesak? Would you please explain why you feel bonding is better than perhaps maybe increasing the rates a little more even? Or to, I mean, maybe to counter Mr. Johnson's point, because I happen to agree with him as well.
Yeah, it's a great question. It's a balance, what I look at. Remember, I talked about the operating income kind of being our upper boundary in setting rates? Once our rates are recovering at a position that meets this about $470,000, that, at that point, our customers are paying all the O&amp;M, the depreciation, and that inflationary adjusted increase on our assets each year, they're paying that, they're funding that, as well as the, any debt, debt interest expense. So I look at that, and I could increase your rates more to get our cash in a position that, you know, keeps us in good shape, but then we start getting into a position that we're over-collecting through our rates. So this million dollars helps spread that need for capital over, you know, the next 20 years, over that term.
Mr. Kasbaum, before we get into a debate of all of the issues you've brought forth so far, and I don't know what you're going to do next, and we move into hour number two on your presentation, I'd like you to, if you could, hit the highlights of what you're suggesting, and we're probably not going to go into a long debate on what we best should do this evening. I suggest this goes to personal and finance and come back with a recommendation. But we do have a lot of agenda items in common, and I'm concerned you're just ramping up. And.
Two slides.
No, I'm nearly done.
You're done, did you say?
Almost done.
I'm nearly done.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's go. Okay, thank you.
All right. So I talked about the targets in the previous system department, so they're built the same way, all right? But here is a. But here is a summary then for cost of service per REU unit against, you know, I have how many units you bill. And down at the bottom, we see we're at $4 per REU currently. Cost of service shows we want to be about $7.80. So that's what we're doing. We would be increasing this $4 by that 15% in the next two years, followed by 5% thereafter. So this is just the overall summary then. Rate design would be developed based on what kind of rate track you want to, to look at for this utility. And then I just thought it might be something that the department looks at, billing some kind of policy for capital projects so that your, your cash, you have something there, and, and it, it would be internally restricted for, you know, projects that need to be done that were not on the plan. Here's an example, bill impact then over the next five years for a single family and commercial below that. With the 15%, you can see we go from $4 for the single family to 460 to 530 until we get to 615 in year five. That is the end of my presentation.
Okay. Any more questions of the presenter? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Dean, anything that you're looking for this evening?
No, to your point, we'll work with PNF Committee to come up with a.
Either committee, I think, could take this, but it seems to be.
I think it's more PNF.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, item 8A, Safety and Public Works Committee, Mike O'Dea, Chairman.
All right, I'll try and be as exciting with mine. Got a good start. We have a turkey trot. First item on SPW is a application for a street closure for the Turkey Trot 5K that is on Thanksgiving. And recommendation was to, or the motion was to approve the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached application, and ISO move.
Second, motion by O'Dea, second by Chesak, and a discussion. Mr. Chair.
Uh, this, this is a street closure from, I believe, 7:00 AM to noon, beginning, they go from the Armory, utilize Wright Street, TC Road, and South 10th Street, South 11th Street, County Road 45, and the Fairgrounds.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item was a request for a final pay. This is for improvement 19-2, Cayuna Lakes State Trail West. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the final pay request for improvement 19-2, Cayuna Lakes State Trail West segment in the amount of $35,621.88, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stengline, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Third item was a final pay request for the historic water tower Phase 1. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the final pay request for the historic water tower Phase 1 project in the amount of $49,340.35, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stengline, any discussion? Mr. Chair.
So this is Phase 1, obviously waiting to see how much Phase 2 is, is going to cost us. And if we can get to that number next, we have set aside 300,000, and we have another ARPA 200,000, so 500,000 we put towards the water tower. We still will have after this about $235,000 set aside for the water tower.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was approval of an SEH amendment to the Trunk Highway 371B and Willow Street Roundabout. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the amendment request for the Phase 1 ESA in the amount of $10,382.40, ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Stengline, any discussion? Mr. Chair.
So the environmental study that was done when we redid the highway a few years ago, they wouldn't accept that in this roundabout study, so we have to do a new one. Turns out the cost is about $10,382.40. We are told that MINDOT will cover 50%. We don't have a formal contract. We're just going to keep track of what costs mount up to with this project as we keep going. But just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Our motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number five was a review of classification of non-conservation tax forfeit parcels. And it's just one parcel. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend concurring with the non-conservation status of the parcel as described, so that it may be sold to the adjacent property owner and consolidated with parcel number 99330522, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by O'Dea, second by Stengline, any discussion? Mr. Chair.
This is actually not, this is not city land, correct? It is city land, okay. It's on the edge of the city, on the back of Gilbert Lake. It's pretty much, the only person that can get to this chunk of property is the person that's requesting this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was approving some easements, plans, and specifications for the authorized, and authorizing the bidding for improvement 21-15 Buffalo Hills Gully remediation. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend approving the temporary permanent easements attached, approving the plans and specifications and authorized bidding of the project with a plan, planned bid opening date not yet determined, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Uh, this is the, the big gully project that we've talked about a lot. We have about 905,000 coming in grant funding. This project is actually up to about 1.3 million. So we're coming up with the extra 400,000 out of our own funds.
Nice. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I heard in the last hour that we were hoping to get 905,000. I'm hearing we have received 905,000. Can I get a clarification on the status of this 905,000 dollar grant funding?
We, we have been awarded the 905,000.
If we do the project, we get the money.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, good question. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was authorizing staff to apply for Safe Routes to School Grant for Lowell Elementary. Recommendation and motion coming out of committee was to authorize application for the Safe Routes to School Grant for Lowell Elementary, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Chesak, Mr. Chair.
I should add, the maximum for these grants went from 500,000 to a million, and we did approve. We did motion for up to the maximum. This, this preliminary design is, if, if you want to pull it up, Brent, has some bump outs that we discussed. It's not a final design by any means. Might be some issues with those bump outs as far as picking up kids from school and connecting certain sidewalks and things like that. But this is just to approve applying for that grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I didn't ask this in committee, but it's, I just, I'm wondering, can this, being at Safe Routes to School for Mr. Dean, can we do this project without bump outs?
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I, that's entirely up to the council and what they'd like to do. Depends on what we put into the application, though. If we imply that we want to see curb bump outs in the application, we're granted those funds. The MINDOT is going to want to see us construct those as part of the agreement for the grant.
President Bevins?
Chesak, yes?
Yeah, I, I'm, okay, so if we approve this right now, you're going to go move forward with asking for, applying for bump out money, right?
That's what's shown in the Safe Routes plans, that, based on that scope.
Okay. Is there a deadline on this, Mr. Dean? Submit this?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe it's this fall, if I remember correctly. I can't remember the exact date and deadline.
Okay, because I mean, it's, so if we, to Chairman O'Dea's point, President Bevins, there may be some concerns about bump outs, but once we apply for them, we're stuck with them, is how I'm understanding this. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to even move forward at this point until we decide if we want bump outs or not. I, I, not necessarily against them, but if we have concerns, we should be careful if we're going to apply for them and then perhaps not want to do them. At this point, would it be, we, could you, Mr. Dean, could you tell us if we don't do this tonight, are we going to be too late in submitting the grant application? If we wait till next meeting?
The deadline for the letters of intent is November 9th, so we could put it on the next agenda if we needed to.
Mr. Bevins, I'd move to table this until our next meeting?
We have a motion to table until the next meeting, it seems, in order. Is there a second?
Oh, go ahead, second.
We have a motion, so the discussion is only the date of the table, which is the first meeting in November. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion to table takes precedence over the initial motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion is tabled. We'll bring it back as it is, which is to send in the application with the bump outs. But we can mess with that. Please proceed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Our final item was a direction on active code enforcement cases. We just had one case on this agenda tonight. That's 303 J Street. Issue is a fence. I don't know how familiar you guys are with it. This, a fence was built without a permit about a year ago. Issue is the height of the fence. It's on a corner. As it's built, it should be four feet instead of six feet. The property owner has been contacted. Motion coming out of committee was to continue fining at $300 a month until this is corrected, and ISO move.
I have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Mr. Chair.
I would just say that the staff has been in contact with the property owners, and there just hasn't been any movement forward in correcting the issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Did I miss one?
Yep, we'll get to it. Hold on. Let's finish this one. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see it notes that they are registered as American nationals and no longer a member of the corporation that is the United States. Have we, have we considered opening like bilateral talks or anything with that nation to maybe resolve this fence situation peacefully?
It's all about the money.
Okay, we'll get the money.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Let's whip back up to item eight, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I missed item number eight. This was authorization to submit a transportation alternatives grant application. This is for the Trunk Highway 210 Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge, and maximum would be about 800,000 with a 20% local match, so our 200,000. And a motion coming out of committee was to authorize staff to go ahead and apply for the grant.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by O'Dea, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Item eight, Council Committee reports, APIS Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, including the added agenda, six items tonight. The first of which is to authorize signatures and enter into a school resource officer services agreement. And the motion is to authorize the signatures and enter into the proposed school resource officers services agreement between the City of Brainerd and ISD 181, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You remember, you may remember, a long time ago, 24 school days ago, we decided to cancel the contract. But there has been some clarification from the Attorney General's Office that makes us more comfortable going back into the schools. The law hasn't been corrected yet, but the police chief is comfortable going back into the schools with the school resource officer. So he recommended approving this contract. It is prorated down to $78,905, which is taking away the 24 days the SRO was not in the school building.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Yes, I think my question would be for the chief. We, we agreed to cancel our end of this contract on September 5th. And then according to the contract terms, it would, we would be able to do that within 90 days unless the school district agreed, and they did so, I believe, on the 11th. So during that time between the 5th, would be the 6th, 7th, and 8th, did we still provide service for the SRO, being that we weren't officially out of the contract until the school district agreed?
So could you repeat the dates again?
The 5th of September, we canceled. The 11th, the school district canceled at their first meeting in September.
Correct.
And so did we still provide SRO services on the 6th, 7th, and 8th of September?
No, not directly inside of the school pursuant to the contract we withdrew from.
Okay.
We did adjust our operational assignment of an officer to where he focused primarily the exterior and remained in close proximity.
Right. I was just curious if we were, being that we weren't officially out of the contract or we were still providing the SRO until the school district agreed. Apparently not. And then there is an item from the Minnesota Police and Peace Officers Association that you provided in our packet. And one line in here, they said they got together with Governor Walz, I believe, and I think the leaders of the Senate and House. And this line here, I was wondering if you could explain it. "We expressed our concerns with new language in section 121A, the SRO, this SRO law, and the way the law came to fruition." Do you know what they mean by that, the way the law came to fruition?
And if you give me a moment, I am looking through that document to see if I can reference that myself.
That would be towards the bottom of, of the MPPOA document, I believe. I didn't keep a note as to where that was, but it was where the, it was closer to the bottom where they talked about meeting with the governor and the other state legislators. And the promise by Walz is to come back and, within the first two weeks, is to look at this language. So it's right before that part of it.
Okay, I, I think I found it here, yeah. My assumption to what they're speaking to here is the desired remedy was for the governor to call a special session. And I believe they were emphasizing in here, still encouraging and looking to see some legislative change at some point and not just indefinitely relying on the Attorney General's opinion solely, I believe.
Where it says so, it says, "We express our concern with the new language, the SR, in the SRO law, and then the way the law came to fruition." That's what they talked to with the governor.
Sure, and I think maybe what they were referring to is this, this change that affected law enforcement was, you know, amended to a statute that does not typically address law enforcement actions. It's typically solely school matters. And as a result, the law enforcement community, I, I think, felt a little blindsided and did not see this coming, was not, law enforcement community was not part of any legislative committees as this was going through the committees prior to being passed into law. So I, I believe that's probably what they're speaking to, is just how this whole issue developed through the, you know, through legislation. It was not in its, I guess, typical fashion how, you know, matters pertaining to law enforcement generally, you know, present themselves.
Yeah, Mr. Bevins?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the chief is correct there. So in essence, you didn't, there were no stakeholders. That would be law enforcement representatives at the table when this was being discussed and, and agreed upon. And one interesting note I found is like, if you're, if you're, if you're not at the table as a stakeholder, you're typically on the menu. And so that's what's happening here by our legislature, having a, a law changed to where it directly affects and impacts small communities like our own and even larger communities when you want to provide an SRO into the school district. And, and it's a great. service that we offer and provide. But at the same time, when we, when we talk about this, this language by the Attorney General, he had all the information the first time he made a decision, or opinion, and then the next time he met with people, stakeholders, let's call them, and he changes his opinion that, now, chief, you're telling me you're comfortable with this? You're with this, with our, with our person, our personnel that works for the City of Brainerd, you're comfortable with putting them into the school district with the law, the way the law is written, based on everything that's happened? That's what I'm concerned about here is our liability. We still have the same law, and that's what I'm concerned about. You know, the money thing here, folks, is one thing. We get money from the school district, it pays for that officer, but I'm really concerned about putting an officer in there and having that liability, which can ruin a person's career. If there's a, if there's a, if the camera angle isn't correct and they see something happen, or this is what happens, I think we're making a hasty decision, and I will be voting no against this, because we have to be concerned about our liability. I see this law being exploited just for the sake of somebody saying, there's a lot of hatred out there against peace officers, and I don't want to see our SRO become involved in anything like that at this time, till its law is changed and corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Any other comments on the motion anymore? Mr. O'Day?
See, I think Mr. Chesak makes a lot of really good points with this. The part I struggle with in thinking about this and which way is the best way to go is you're weighing it against the safety of the kids in the school. That officer being in the school is, is very important. Yes, you're weighing it against somebody's word that hasn't necessarily been the most honest, you're weighing it against money, but these kids are clearly safer with an SRO officer in there. We'll see if, if the Attorney General's word is worth its weight, and I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna support getting our SRO officer back in the school at this time, but I do agree.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? The motion is to reinstate the contract at a reduced rate, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item on our agenda is the 2024 budget, discussion on number of sworn officers. The motion out of committee is to direct staff to budget for 27 sworn officers in the 2024 budget and to use the one-time public safety aid to fund the eligible costs of budgeting for one and a half sworn officers by funding 100% of the non-pericost in 2024, 66% in 2025, and 33% in 2026, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a first of a number of budgetary-related things that will come out of our committee in the next few months, but I think, or the next two months, but I think Connie really found a good use of the public safety aid fund that's, that helps with the budgetary process and our levy concerns this year. So this year, one and a half FTEs will be funded out of that public safety aid, so the levy dollars will only be 25.5, but over the next three years, we'll step up to funding the full 27 officers out of the levy dollars.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item is to accept the resignation of Administrative Specialist Brittany Tolleson, and the motion is to accept Ms. Brittany Tolleson's resignation effective October 25, 2023, further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the Administrative Specialist Public Works Department position, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
It's unfortunate that we're losing Brittany, that she is moving on, but we're going to move quickly to replace her, so we do have administrative staff in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, the next item, Mr. President, is the, the item we added, and that's to accept the resignation of Recreation Coordinator Katie Kaufman, and that motion is to accept Ms. Kaufman's resignation effective October 13, 2023, and to send the Recreation Coordinator job description to the Parks and Rec Committee to review and give us a recommendation at our next meeting, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, in the agenda, staff recommended just backfilling the position, but this, this Recreation Coordinator position is a holdover from when we had a Parks Department before we merged into a Public Works Department, so I think it, doing our due diligence, to send it over to the Parks and Rec Commission to get any input they may have on what they would like to see from this position going forward, now is the time to do it because the position's open. So I think that's what we should do.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
And Bevins?
Yes, Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I'm curious if there's any kind of severance or any kind of sick time or anything like that this employee is going to be receiving. I think para is in order, but that's not what I'm referring to.
HR Director Schubert?
Yes, the employee will be eligible to receive their vacation pay that is required by law. The sick leave, we do not pay that out. That is only paid out when someone retires or they are certified disabled by a physician.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our final item is the Lakes Area Media Collaborative. So you saw in the packet that staff has filled out the complaint form. Oh, no, I skipped ahead.
There we go.
That's not, we'll get to that later. Right, for now, we'll consider the approval of Environmental Resources Technician Position, and the motion is to approve the new Environmental Resource Technician Position, including the proposed job description and 2023 wage grid as presented, and further that staff negotiate a formal agreement for the joint position with the City of Baxter to be funded 50/50, as well as a recommended wage with the new IBEW Administrative Support Union, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the MS4, the SWIP MS4, all of, all of the water services that we're needing to hire a person to do. Luckily, Baxter is willing to work with us. This is another great project we get to work on together with the City of Baxter, that we're both gonna need a half-time employee. We'll house him in the City of Brainerd. We have more room in our City Hall, but it will be 50/50, and this is the one I asked about when we turned that brief presentation earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, is this employee, now, when you say negotiate, is that gonna talk about where this person's office is, like, I think they suggested here at City Hall, is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna, Jeff, I'm gonna let Chairman Johnson answer this.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Chesak. The negotiation for 50/50, and verbally we've agreed to being 50/50, and that is the salary benefits of the employee, the desk, the computer, the equipment, it will all be 50/50 for the first, I think we're negotiating a three-year agreement.
And then will this employee be entitled to go to a Baxter employee appreciation and a City of Brainerd employee?
Ooh.
If Baxter invites them, I-
50/50?
We would allow it. We would allow it, but they are a Brainerd employee. They're under our insurance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, onto the Attorney General complaint form. As you see, it's filled out, filled out beautifully, 100% factually correct. The motion out of committee is to wait until next meeting to vote on submitting this, to allow Lakes Media Collaborative the opportunity to give us comment before the packet is due for the next meeting, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
At 4:59 this afternoon, basically, our attorney received an email from their attorney saying that they wanted to correct all of the inaccuracies or something along those lines. There's nothing inaccurate here, but if they want to comment on it, we are under no legal obligation. We're just submitting a complaint to the Attorney General. But see, but it appears that they have something they want to say to us. We've been operating in good faith and kindly and friendly the entire time. I'm glad they got to us within two weeks. That was pretty surprising, but they reached out and asked for three more weeks, and since we usually operate in good faith, I figured we'd continue to do so.
You're like the good fairy. Chairman, or Jeff Chesak?
You know, it's interesting, because it doesn't require us, anybody can file this complaint, so I think we all know that, but it's, I, I think I appreciate your, your suggesting that we give them an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Next up is item nine, unfinished business. Item 9A is the call for applicants. I'll turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Vado.
All right, we'll make it super fast tonight. The following commissions have seats available. You can contact City Hall for that. Charter Commission, two terms expiring in 2026, two terms expiring in 2025. Library Board, one term expiring in 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, why do we still have this on here? I believe you guys voted to get rid of that. Exit out, not available, cancel. TAC, one term expiring in 2023. We also have one term for the EDA expiring in 2026.
Thank you very much. I have all my spots filled.
This is, this is the fewest spots we've ever had in this entire history.
9B is a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2023A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. Finance Director Hillman, what do you have to add?
Thank you, Council President. The resolution that was in the packet was a draft, and it couldn't be completed until after the bids were received. A complete resolution and bid tabulation has been distributed, and we have Chris Hogan from Baker Tilly here to discuss the city's bond rating as well as the tabulation of the bid results. So I'd like to turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Connie.
Come on up, take as long as you want.
Well, I have all good news. So, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Like Connie said, I'm Chris Hogan. I'm here from Baker Tilly, here to present the results of the city's bond sale earlier today. I'd just like to start with a market update. This is, it's called the Bond Buyer Index. It's a five-year index. It's a trend of tax-exempt borrowing, and it always, the graph always tells a story. So you can see where we are now is even slightly below where we were five years ago. That dip that we see in '20 and '21 is the result of the pandemic, and we were at all-time historical lows at that time. Then you can see, starting in '22, how the curve goes up. This is in part, or mostly in part, due to the federal rate increases. There's been a total of 11 of them, and the total amount of 5 and 1/4%. So to date, the city sold $5,435,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2023A. The proceeds are used, were used to, will be used to reimburse the city for road improvements and related water utility projects and to finance the sewer river project. The overall repayment term on the bonds is 15 years. The improvement portion, which was the roads, is a repayment term of 10 years. As of late August, our market was showing a true interest cost estimate of 3.81. Last week, we looked at where the market was, and our estimate was 4 and 1/4, and actual results of the sale today was 4.01. The city received seven bids. The lowest bid was from FHN Financial Capital Markets with the actual result of 4.01. The bids ranged from a lowest of 4.01 to a high of 4.24. The parameters of the bonds were, was reduced to $5,110,000 due to the receipt of a premium. Part of, part of a bond sale is going through a rating to get the bonds rated. The process, well, we'll start with the, essentially, what, what does a rating mean to the city? It's, it's a measure of the city's financial strength and ability to make payments in a timely fashion. It indicates the likelihood of a default. The higher the rating, the less likely, likely to default, the less likely to default, the lower the interest rate investors will accept. So, like I said, we go through a rating process. We had a rating discussion with Standard and Poor's, the city, and Baker Tilly. The S&amp;P provides a discussion topics in advance of the rating conference. We had this conference on August 25. The city received a rating of AA- and affirmed the city's outstanding general obligation debt rating of a AA- with a stable outlook. Next slide is, just shows the three largest credit rating agencies and the highest investment grade to the lowest. See, I've highlighted where the city is, is at AA-. You can see how high that is and that, what a good rating that is. So, interesting thing about ratings, if you go one notch lower, for example, the cities, based on the city's issuance today, the cost differential, if it was rated one, one notch lower, it'd be the additional cost of about $40,000 in interest. So, a rating is really important to the city, and it is impacted in the rates that you'll get. So, the S&amp;P provides a rating, a rating report, and I'm just gonna give a overview of the strengths and credit challenges that they identified in that report. The strengths they noted was stable economy with continued redevelopment projects and higher sales prices leading to significant growth in the tax base, very strong liquidity and reserves, strong financial management practices and policies. The credit challenge they identified was high debt liability profile as compared to other comparable Minnesota cities. However, they recognize that the utility revenue does reduce the property tax debt.
We got a quick question here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. On that one, do they take into account our utility revenue debt?
They, they do.
Okay.
Yes, they do. And in fact, it was a, in this case, it was a positive because it offset the tax levy.
Right, it's rate payers instead of tax payers.
Yeah.
So it actually was a benefit-
And the ability for the city to raise rates at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed. Sorry. Thank you.
S&amp;P's outlook, they always identify things that could result in upgrades, so they identified ongoing growth in the tax base, higher income levels while maintaining strong finances, things that could result in a downgrade, would be weakening of the budgetary performance resulting in decrease of reserves and liquidity, debt carrying charges to hamper budgetary flexibility. So, based on the sale results today, I would recommend approving the resolution awarding the $5,110,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2023A, to FHN Financial Capital Markets based on their low bid of 4.01%.
President Bevins? Please. In all seriousness, I'm, can you, are bonds an actual physical object?
No, not anymore. No.
How long ago did that change, would you say?
Oh, gosh, when I started at Springsteen, actually, they still was, there was a paper type of transfer, and I've been working 23 years, so, and that was probably near the end of that.
Well, I've been waiting about 25 years to ask that question. And then, secondly, when you say we, the city sold these bonds, essentially, it's the same as borrowing money, correct?
Well, you go up for bids, so it's marketed, we, you know, that's why I have a preliminary official statement. That's a disclosure document that gives all the city's financial. That's what the investors will look at in order to choose if they want to bid on the city's bonds. So we open it up, and we have, the bids were taken at 10:30, so, you know, they have till 10:30, and at 10:30, that's when the bids are in.
So it's essentially the same as borrowing money, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
That's, that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Okay.
You're correct.
A lot of people don't know that, believe it or not. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Please proceed.
That's it.
I got a motion when you're ready.
That's it. Chairman Johnson? We're looking for a resolution.
All right, I moved to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds. I need that number up there.
511000.
Series 2023A, and the original aggregate principal amount of $5,110,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, Connie probably has this number. Do we know how much of that is general fund debt, and how close is the number we've been estimating in the debt levy to what it actually should be?
I did not have time to look at that today, but I will get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would like that too, Mr. Bevins.
Perfect. I think we'll all like that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. Anything else we need to do?
Nope.
Thanks for coming and hanging in there.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay. All right, next up is item 9C. All right, next up is item nine C. Adopting a resolution for assessment for the 2022 and 2023 nuisance abatement in 2022, 2023 downtown special, uh, services assessments. This is Jesse Dean, Public Works and James Kramvik. What would you two, either of you or both of you, like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll just introduce this really quick. Uh, attached to the item, the assessment rolls for the downtown special services district and the, uh, 2022, 2023 nuisances. I know James would like to expand a little bit on the nuisances really quick before we finish.
Yes, thank you, Council and Mayor. Um, so, uh, staff will, uh, kind of go through, uh, two different letters that were sent out via email today. Uh, one of them was 1420 Quince. These are two letters that, uh, staff sent out because they're not available for the public hearing tonight. Uh, 1420 Quince, uh, received two citations for grass. Uh, and then after the two citations, the property owner, um, did, um, cut the grass. They never reached out to the two, um, staff to work with staff. This, uh, property owner, Mr. Kinder, has received grass citations every year since 2015, so they are aware of the ordinance. Um, also, the property continues to have outstanding issues related to the building permit on this property. Um, and it was specifically in compliance with the erosion control measures. Uh, so with 1420 Quince, staff's recommendation on this one would, uh, to not waive the, uh, pending nuisance assessments. Um, the other one that was sent out was for nine 15 Laurel Street. Uh, this was really for unlicensed vehicles as well as junk and debris. Uh, this property did have to be abated twice. Uh, recently, within the last month, uh, conservator, uh, essentially conservator was, was turned over to, um, kind of a service entity. Uh, staff has been working them, with them in the last month. Uh, there has been no other issues. Um, this, I guess this past month with additional items being placed on the property, um, there was a gentleman that was either working at the property or staying on the property since, uh, been moved out. Um, and I believe they put no trespassing signs up there. Uh, the total assessments for nine 15 Laurel is 4,225. Staff certainly does not recommend, um, waiving the abatements on this property, but, uh, as Council can take into consideration the citations on there in the amount of 1,675. Um, in the last property, there is a property, uh, owner tonight, uh, Mr. Samuelson, that's going to be speaking about six 24 Eighth Avenue Northeast. Um, this is a total abatement amount of 1,875. Uh, staff did begin working with this property owner, um, or representative, uh, mid-summer here and, uh, kind of under the understanding, if the property was improved, staff would, um, waive the citations in the amount of 1,350. Staff is recommending that. Um, really, the issue with this property is there was, uh, um, somebody that wasn't supposed to be at the property any longer. They had to go through, um, a process to remove this person. Uh, since that's been done, um, there's been no, no other issues with the property and they are working on cleaning it up. So staff is not recommending waiving the abatement, uh, for six 24 Eighth Avenue Northeast, but is recommending waiving the citations in the amount of 1,350. And I can answer any other questions.
That address on that last one one more time, Mr. Kramvik. Of the one you're recommending the.
The, the address was six 24 Eighth Avenue Northeast.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we go to the next step, which is to open the public hearing? Mr. Dean?
Thank you. If I can just quick clarify, so following the public hearing, uh, staff's recommending adoption of the resolution, adopting the assessment rolls, which actually does begin the 30-day, uh, payment clock. For the 2024 taxes, the city's deadline to provide the assessments to the county is December 1st. Uh, so to meet that deadline, staff would recommend that the assessment rolls are adopted at this meeting. If there are contestations, staff recommends that the council act on those at tonight's meeting to meet the deadline of the rolls to the county. However, if council wishes, they could remove assessments at the next meeting if they'd like, uh, if there were any specific contestations that the council wanted to review further.
Did everybody hear that? Everybody understand that?
President Bevins?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
So, just so I'm clear, if we want to, um, relieve anybody of what we claim they owe, if we, I should say this, if we, if we move forward with staff's recommendation on, um, moving forward with all the assessments, we can always remove them from the county assess, assessing on their taxes. Is that, is that, am I understanding, is that a, um, a more efficient method of doing it, um, Mr. Dean, as opposed to, uh, coming back at a later date if we have something in question?
That helps us keep within the 30-day timeline before the December 1st deadline to the county.
Thank you.
A clarification on what Mr. Chesak just asked. If we know we're gonna abate a, or remove a assessment, you can do it tonight if you know it, but if there's consideration, Mr. Dean's recommendation is to certify those assessments this evening and come back in two weeks. Okay, everybody understand that? Okay, next up is the public hearing. And here are the rules. We'd like to have you keep it to three minutes if possible. This is not a debate and it's not where you get to ask questions of staff. They're available Monday through Friday. We have open offices. You can come on in and ask questions and debate. This is where, and you don't get to ask questions of us. You get to testify as to your assessment. So if you, if, if you have something that you'd like us to hear about your proposed assessment, now's the time to let us know, okay? If you're, if you have concerns that you need questions answered, come back in tomorrow morning, uh, 7:30 and make an appointment with staff and you'll get those questions answered. Understand? So we don't, we don't have a argument. We have a time for you to tell us what you think of your assessment, okay? So just so you understand.
And just a reminder, this is the resolution specifically for the nuisances and the downtown special services district. We have two more, so.
Right, so this is, this is nuisances, like as you just heard, and down, that's right, we'll have, uh, North Branded Reconstruction Greenwood Street and others, uh, later on. So regarding nuisances and downtown special assessments, I will open the public hearing at, uh, I don't even know what time it is. It's 9:07. And you can come on up. You have to give us your name and address, uh, uh, because you're on TV and people, we need to know this. And, uh, the address is most important as well as your name and tell us what you, what you want us to know about why you're here. Come on up one at a time, as quickly as possible. Come please. And let's, let's hear what you, you've got to say. And your name and address, please. And thanks for coming, by the way.
Thank you. Luke Santelli, 1623 Emma Street. And I just got a letter to say I'm coming here and I spoke to him. He said there's no abatement and that's all I'm waiting for is then good to go, pay the citation and that's it, is my understanding.
I, I don't understand your question. You're here.
Uh, there's, I'm making sure there's no abatement, so no extra fees on my taxes. That's 675 at the.
If you got the letter, you're getting a tax assessment. You have a bill due.
Okay, he said, he said it was waived before, I was removed before the letter was sent.
What was that address again?
1623 Emma Street.
Okay.
I can clarify. So, um, so an abatement of the property, which would be removal of the, the items, did not have to be done because the, the property owner did remove them, but there's still outstanding, um, citations to pay in the amount of 675 that would be put onto the taxes.
So you, you have a tax debt or will have one.
It is a citation of 675 that needs to be paid.
Yep.
That's just it.
Yep.
Good, thank you. That's all I got.
Connie Hillman?
I'd just like to clarify that you have 30 days to pay that interest free and then it won't go on your taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's next? Come on up, state your name and address. Thank you for coming.
Steve Samuelson, um, 1018 Portland Avenue, Brainerd, Minnesota, but I'm here about six 24 Eighth Avenue Northeast, Brainerd.
We've heard.
Um, apparently, uh, my father helped my niece buy a house, that house. And, uh, she was doing really good paying her bills and all that kind of stuff. And that ended like in February. And so then dad was hard, having to make the house payments. And when I went over there, the house was a mess. People were all over the place. And pretty soon it was one of the police departments, number one houses, to go and chase people out of there. So we, uh, we didn't even get the letter. We weren't notified about, uh, when they had the hearing here, I think in July. So when I finally got the information and I talked to Mr. Kramvik and, uh, told him what the deal was. And so right now, we've almost got everything cleaned out of the house and the yard is already cleaned up and mowed and, and all of that kind of stuff, so. It's, it's, um, it's ready to be, to move on. There's nobody there.
Okay, and you understand that our staff has recommended removing the additional fines, but not the original, not the original complaint?
Yeah.
Understand that? And you've got 30 days to pay it interest free?
Yep.
Or it goes on your taxes?
Yep.
Okay.
And how much was that? I can't remember. Oh, I can't ask that.
Check with him. No, no, it's okay. But we don't want, we don't want you getting into a long discussion with something, with staff. But I'll tell you what, if you swing by tomorrow morning and ask for James, he'll make sure you get that number.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Please come forward. We've state your name and address and thank you for coming.
300 Southeast 27th Street. Right, yeah, 300 Southeast 27th Street. Okay, you say you have weeds and grass. What's weeds and grass?
If you'd like to come in and see the ordinance tomorrow, you absolutely can. We don't have that with us this evening.
Okay, and then he, he, he sent, he sent me some pictures of a tree down.
Okay.
It's on the city street. Why do I gotta clean it up?
If you come in tomorrow morning after 7:30, we can answer that.
I know, but I called to come, I called to come in and talk to them and they said I had to come to this meeting.
Your, would you like to, um, I, I can't tell you what to do other than if you don't understand the violation, we have staff that will go through it with you. We really will. We, we don't have your violations here in front of us.
Okay, so why did she tell me that I have to come here then?
This is a assessment hearing. You have a right to contest your assessment. If you'd like to contest your assessment, all assessments will be certified this evening, possibly, on, on a vote of the council, and then you have, then you have two weeks to evaluate.
So if I come in tomorrow to talk to, who do I gotta talk to? James?
Yep.
Okay, is he gonna drop the charges if this has nothing to do with me?
Not necessarily. I, I would imagine this evening, there will be a vote or not on whether to review your assessment.
Okay, then what do I do about all the neighbors' garbage laying in their yards?
I would call the city.
Okay, I'm talking to the city. It's all on your guys' property.
I would call the city. Call in tomorrow, but I would come tomorrow.
Okay, so when I call in, who do I talk to?
James Kramvik.
Okay, sound like plan.
Okay.
So I just, okay, I'll talk to him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else here on either nuisance assessment?
Yeah, James Moon, 422B Street Northeast. Um, I had some, over, over the winter, I got some, some violations. I bought the property last, last year. I had some major roofwork to do. I had a bunch of modeling, but uh, shortly after I got started, excuse me, I started having some medical issues. Uh, I was having problems with my heart. I was having problems with, with my lungs were getting paralyzed. And it, 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 I mean, it took until like, probably in the February of this year to get it all figured out, but I was having reactions to a medication that I was on that was basically screwing me up and, 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 and I was pretty much, uh, you know, just, you know, I, I was unable to even, you know, do anything. You know, I was stuck between my bed to the living room from, from mid-November till, till probably I started in, in, in the early part of February. Once I started getting back where I was able to, able to, to actually move around and, and get stuff accomplished. And, and as soon as I was able to do that, I made the, you know, got in contact and I made the necessary adjustments before it went to a hearing. So I mean, I, you know, I wasn't trying to, you know, when the, uh, when the notices came, I wasn't just, just blowing them off just because, you know, just for the heck of, I mean, I was physically unable to do anything at that time due to my medical conditions I was having due to like Jardiance I was on and it was basically paralyzing my lungs. And, and it was making all four chambers of my heart beat at the same time. So I wasn't getting any blood flow during those circumstances. So I was just pretty much incapacitated at that time.
Have you fixed the problems?
Uh, you know, I, I quit taking the Jardiance.
No, I meant your nuisance problem.
Yes, I did. I did get them cleared up at the time before the hearing. I believe I probably spoke with, with James Punter a couple of times leading up to the hearing and, and I got everything cleared up before, you know, it went to a hearing on it or whatever, I think. And so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next up. Anybody else here to contest a nuisance complaint or a downtown special services? I'll ask a second time and a final time. Anybody online, Brent? We're just checking online before we close the public hearing. All right, looks, looks like no. So we'll close the public hearing at 9:17. Mr. Kramvik and Mr. Dean, I don't know if either of you can answer this. We had a few people contest their hearings. We, you, based on the recommendation, Mr. Dean, you'd like the assessment role certified this evening in its entirety. Do you have a note of those people that have requested that and can come back and report in two weeks? Is that the way you'd like to do this?
So, so recommendation here, I did get a chance to look all of them up based on the, the paperwork they had submitted. Um, they were all clearly violations of the code. Um, staff is recommending to waive the citations for six 24 Eighth Avenue Northeast in the amount of 1,350. Um, however, the other properties, staff's gonna recommend that we bring to the next council meeting with information, um, recommending that we do, um, certify the, the rolls with a potential for next week, um, getting more information and pictures. Um, council can make consideration then for those properties.
Anybody so moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to certify the assessments per the recommendation of staff in its entirety with the exception of the 1350 at six 24 Eighth Avenue North, correct?
Correct.
We have a second. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Uh, just to clarify, we can pull them off at the next meeting if they work with staff and we figure out that they should be. So I have questions and, and I, I think, I think we should get a doctor's note for Mr. Moon and we should forgive his, but I'll just reach out to you, James, with any questions I have between now and next meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Hearing none. I'm sorry, is this a, this is a resolution?
It is.
Uh, so Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stinglin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We will move on to item nine C. Adopting assessment improvement two one dash one two North Branded Reconstruction Project. Uh, presume this is, Mr. Dean, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
No, sir, Mr. President, same process.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing to hear testimony for or against the proposed, uh, proposed assessments. It is 10:16 and if you're here on the North Branded Reconstruction, please come forward, state your name and address and let us know what you think of your proposed assessment. This is your time.
My name is Reverend Leslie Moody. I'm the pastor at First Congregational United Church of Christ, which resides at 415 Juniper Street in Brainerd, and I reside at 411 Juniper Street. I am not, I feel like I'm not fully informed, so I apologize if anything that I'm about to say is inaccurate or unfactual. But the streets and sidewalks that the reconstruction project improved and for which we are being assessed, um, in great number, um, are highly utilized by visitors to Gregory Park and to the hospital down the street. Um, by patients, visitors, employees, um, of the hospital and visitors to the park. The wear and tear that results from the traffic on the street and the sidewalk, um, is then being paid for, um, by those being assessed. Um, the special benefit of increased market value. The wear and tear that results from the traffic on the street and the sidewalk is then being paid for by those being assessed. The special benefit of increased market value that is often the reason that things are assessed is not really applicable to the church property. We've been on that corner for 150 years and have no intention of selling anytime soon. Our congregation is relatively small, and the assessment amount is more than 10% of our annual operating budget, and that's all I have to say, so just for your consideration.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else who wishes to speak on the North Brainerd assessment? Anybody at all? Presume nobody's entered online, Brent, all right? And a third and final time, it is now 9:21, we will close the public hearing in looking to adopt an attached resolution, adopting the assessments of proposed for improvements 2112. So moved. Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is 9F, the final reading, in public hearing of proposed ordinance 1559, off-street parking and outdoor storage.
Greenwood.
I'm sorry.
Greenwood Street.
Oh yeah, let's adopt, let's go back to Item 9E. See, it should be something in the air.
Just trying to go forward.
Everybody, I wanna go back to the sanitary sewer.
Why don't we go to a jury?
It's the chlorine in the water, Kevin.
Yeah, it's the chlorine. Item 9E, adopting a resolution on the assessment for improvement 21-10 Greenwood Street Reconstruction. Jesse Dean, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
No, sir, Mr. President, same process.
Thank you very much, it is exactly 9:22, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed assessments for Greenwood Street, and ask if you're here to speak on that assessment, please come forward and state your name and address. I see nobody online, I will ask a second time on the Greenwood Street assessment, improvement 21-10, and a third and final time, we will close the public hearing on the Greenwood Street assessment, and look for a motion to adopt the assessment for improvement 21-10 Greenwood Street Reconstruction.
So moved.
So moved by Stengline, second by O'Day, any discussion on Greenwood Street? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Now we're up to 9F, which is ordinance, proposed ordinance 1559, the off-street parking and outdoor storage. Mr. Krampic, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, so just wanted to add one item, there's been a few questions about the last portion of this ordinance, which deals with off-street parking on unimproved surfaces. Brent, if you could bring up the graphic that's in the ordinance? If you go to the ordinance, it should be the last page of the ordinance. There we go. So this explains what this ordinance is about, so you can see, you have the street that's on the north side of here, in the rear, the south side of the property, it'd be potentially an alley, there could not be an alley, there may not be an alley as well, but this ordinance allows for three vehicles to be parked essentially on unimproved surfaces such as Class 5 or grass. All other vehicles, you can see, have to be in either the garage or a contained fence area. So the result of this ordinance is from the number of complaints we've received, you know, specifically on corner properties where people are parking kind of throughout the entire yard on the grass, and, you know, really visible from the street area. So this shows that there still are three vehicles that can be parked, or trailers on an unimproved surface, grass or Class 5, but the rest have to be either screened or in a garage, and I can't answer any other questions.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Mr. Krampic, we are going to move on to the first order of business on this, and look for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance, ordinance 1559, dispensing with the actual reading, which that vote must be unanimous. Is there a motion to have the third reading? Or, I'm sorry, ooh, that's, I've been on the council too long, the final reading.
So moved.
Motion by Stengline?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion does pass unanimously. Now we will open the public hearing at 9:25, and ask if there's anybody in the audience or online who wishes to speak on proposed ordinance 1559. I'll ask a second time, and a final time, and I will close the public hearing on proposed ordinance 1559, and look for a motion to adopt ordinance 1559.
So moved.
Motion by Stengline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Mr. Stunek, should we skip ahead to Christmas, those are much faster, more fast meetings.
I think so.
We've got a couple things here to do. Next up is 9G, the final reading of proposed ordinance number 1560, amending section 150503 of the city code authorizing the police department to conduct background checks for tobacco, tobacco products, and tobacco-related product license applications. We will turn it over to Chief Davis, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet, chief?
Only thing to mention is, since the first reading on October 2nd, I'm not aware of staff receiving any questions or comments on this amended change.
Thank you. We look forward to a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1560. So moved.
Second.
By Chesak?
Johnson.
Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously, do we not need a public hearing on this?
Do not.
All right, then we will go right on to looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1560.
So moved.
Motion by Terry? Second by Stengline? Any discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Item 10 is new business, we have no new business on tonight's agenda, item 11, this is...
Sorry, that was just me.
It kind of sounded like you said oops.
I did say oops. I hit the wrong button on the computer.
You don't say oops, it's like being in charge of the bomb.
My mic was on.
You just about gave poor Mr. Stunek a stroke. Oops, we've got a few more things. Next up is the item 11, the public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, and we usually ask you to keep it in three minutes or less, I will open the public forum at 9:28. If there's something you'd like to talk about that we haven't discussed, now's your time.
I don't feel like I should go talk.
I know. Second time, and a final request, and we will close the public forum, and we will move on to staff reports. We'll start to my left, HR Director Schubert, how about from the legal department?
Welcome here, thank you.
Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. President, just one, a quick item here, the next planning commission meeting will have one agenda item, it'll be the continued discussion of a draft ordinance for short-term rentals, discussing a potential cap and how they're districted, so it's still a draft ordinance, planning commission most likely will be looking to do a final ordinance in public hearing at the November meeting. That's everything.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, so just a couple of quick updates, the Lum Park Road project's mostly complete, the contractors already paved that roadway, and only needs to pave the remaining parking areas. Afterwards, they'll clean things up and get ready for final establishment, which will check back in the spring. Landwear is also gonna get started this week on the South Fourth Washout Project, Southwest Fourth, once they get in there, they're thinking about four to five days to get that project wrapped up, so we should be able to open up the project after that. The mayor was also really incredible with helping coordinate the Great Pumpkin Festival this last Saturday under short notice, my understanding is attracted, it's still a few hundred people to the new venue in Memorial Park, and I heard from some of our staff that they did receive some positive comments about the event actually being held there, too.
Excellent, thank you very much. Finance Director Hillman?
Nothing.
Nothing? Chief Davis for the police department?
Yes, one thing, on Halloween, October 31st, I'd like to invite all local goblins and ghouls to stop by the Brainerd Police Department, 3:30 to 6:30, come spend a little time with officers, and let us help fill your treat bucket.
Excellent. Eric Sharper, tear from the HRA, online with us?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, this is the first time I've recognized you in a year and a half. Administrator Burgman?
Second meeting in a row, nothing to add.
Yes, we're on a roll now.
Let's go to the Honorable Mayor, David Bede.
Oh, thank you, just want to thank staff, as well as Jesse did, for the Great Pumpkin Festival, ended up being a great event, you know, we had to shuffle a few things quickly, but we got it done, large inflatable jack-o'-lantern pumpkin was there, children jumped, pumpkins were rolled, pumpkins were won in races. I had one, because I was the guy calling the races this year, and I had a quick switcheroo, I said 13 and up means 13 and up, adults are welcome. You would be amazed at how many adults wanted to race, and it was a really good time. Shout out to the Shaws, right here downtown, my neighbors, I believe they raced in every single adult event, did not win, their kids won multiple times, they did not win, but shout out to them for their participation, just a lot of fun, and again, shifting it over to Memorial, I was a little concerned about that, just because a change of venue is always tough, but people came over, people enjoyed it, the one thing we heard was that people liked that it was a flat area with a perimeter, because their kids were running wild, so they knew they could see them.
Also Baxter kids.
Well, we won't say nothing of such, but just want to thank everyone for participating, and thank non-park staff for stepping up, Tony, Brittany, Sean from Streets was fantastic, and just want to thank everybody for being involved, as well as John Miller from the park board, and Kara from the park board as well, just a lot of fun to get that done. So next event here in town, also pumpkin-related, Spooktacular, right downtown, so check that out on October 28th, right downtown.
Is that another council meeting? Spooktacular?
Spooktacular.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let's start ladies first tonight, Kara?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Well, I toured the wastewater treatment plant.
Again?
Yes, again, but unlike our little drive-by with Todd, I went inside with some of my friends from Region 5, and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and, yeah, the other group is failing, oh, Mintec, so I guess the short version is that Charlie really wants to put that eternal flame to use in some way, so, yeah, I thought that would be...
I find that a little creepy. Spooktacular.
That is spooktacular.
Thank you. Mr. Stunek?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have one thing, I want to thank the council for passing ordinance 1559 today, and I would like to formally be the first person to register a complaint under the ordinance, 1420 Quinn Street, has had an unsecured trailer in their side yard for over four years now, so one week after the publication of this ordinance, I hope you give them the honor of issuing them the first citation, thank you, James.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that enthusiastic report. Chairman O'Day?
Full alert. I have a quick question maybe for the administrator, yes or no? Not much of it.
You don't have to vote on it.
Not a vote, just a question, I'm wondering where we're at with this amazing new partnership with the railroad that we...
Yeah.
No.
Well, a letter did go out.
Letter went out.
A letter did go out.
Letter back.
I have not heard anything.
Oh, what? That is all.
Media collaborative only took seven and a half years, the railroad could take a millennium. Mr. Chesak?
Mr. President, a question on a letter as well, the one to the Public Utilities Commission, did that get signed yet, about the...
Councilmember Chesak, it has not, I did inform Todd this morning, I know that it needs to be to them prior to the BPU Commission meeting, and that packet goes out next week.
And I have one other thing, Mr. Bevins, I don't know if many of you know this, but when I get documents, a lot of times, the computer, the PDF, my screen reader does not work too well with them, but staff has been marvelous this year getting those to me in a format that I can access better, and so I just want to thank everybody involved, even the chief, they'd sent me something that was kind of messed up, he took the time to type it out, and everybody's been really good, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you, that's great news, and I just want to thank everybody for playing nice and doing a good job last week while I was gone, particularly Vice Chairman Johnson, a little bit of foul language.
Just so you know, the meeting was done in 45 minutes.
Right, and now...
When are you leaving again?
Right, okay, and we are looking for a motion to adjourn to closed labor negotiation strategy session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 subdivision 1B, to prepare for negotiations with the IBEW Local Number 31, the IUOE Local Number 49 Unions. Is there a motion to adjourn? And by O'Day, second by Stengline, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an eight-minute break for people to leave the room...